Everybody ready? Well, we've concluded the legislative session. Disappointing, to say the least, that the session ended without a transportation bill, without a bonding bill. Those are serious unmet needs of Minnesota. There are some good and bad features in other legislation that was passed. The tax bill has some very good features for student loans, for childcare tax credit, for working family credit. It's a terrible feature with reducing taxes on tobacco companies. Can't comprehend why that was considered to be good public policy. The supplemental bill, I'm pleased that they passed that. Didn't have everything that I wanted, but it has some of those measures such as pre-kindergarten that I said from the outset were very, very important. I'm particularly disturbed by the way the House in particular treated the University of Minnesota. You know, this is one of the most, if not the most important institutions in our entire state. And I was at a groundbreaking earlier today in Plymouth where in the city of Plymouth the mayor said there are 130 medical technology companies located there. My efforts to build up the medical school at the University of Minnesota are critically important to private sector economic development and to job creation and to making Minnesota, along with what's going on in Rochester with Mayo Clinic, the epicenter of healthcare advances, better quality healthcare for all of our citizens, and the medical technology and the jobs that that creates. And for the House to provide no additional, virtually no additional funding in the supplemental bill for either the University of Minnesota or the Minskew system, and to leave out of the bonding bill, from what I've seen, I haven't even seen the entire bill, the my number-one priority, the health sciences building there for the University of Minnesota, critical failures on the part of the House, and I've told the quote-unquote, "Some of the House members have a problem with the university." Well, grow up and get over it. You know, this institution is too important to all of Minnesota to have some petty concerns and the kind of vindictiveness shown here for eliminating the funding for that critically important institution. So I'll be redressing that if we are going to proceed any further, which remains to be seen in the weeks ahead. Speaker Dowd called me this morning and expressed an interest in the four leaders meeting with myself this afternoon. There's not a consensus on that, so that meeting is not going to happen. I think everybody needs some time to get some deserved sleep, including all of you, and to get the dust settled and for me and my staff to be able to receive this legislation, to read the legislation, which somebody needs to do, and to assess the consequences for Minnesota of the various bills. So I will be proceeding expeditionally to review them after we've received them. I said on radio this morning I'd sign or not sign bills within 48 hours, but I'm going to qualify that to say within 48 hours after we have received the actual bills themselves. I haven't even seen a spreadsheet on the bonding bill, so I can't comment on any of the particulars there. Like many of the members who were acting in the haste of last night, I haven't seen the language in various bills that I certainly want to review carefully and discuss with various concerned parties before making any decisions. So whether or not there'll be a special session, I can't say today. I haven't given it anymore. I've given it 14 hours and 4 minutes of thought, and I haven't come to any conclusions one way or the other. And again, I'd want to meet at some point in the days ahead with legislative leaders and to consider what their interests are and see where we proceed, but I don't have any answers for you today. Glad to respond to questions.
Governor, if you do have to call a special session, are you thinking about starting over on bonding and transportation, or would you use what they had as their agreement?
I haven't made any decisions about that and haven't had a chance to discuss that with the leaders.
Governor, with the tax bill, are you upset enough about the tobacco cuts to take down another bill?
I don't think so, but I haven't seen the entire bill, so I'm at a reserved judgment until I see it. I don't understand why, in the midst of all the other priorities and matters that were left out of all the various bills because supposedly there was not enough money available, that they would see fit to give $40 million in tax breaks to the tobacco industry. It's just a total, I don't know where it came from, I don't know who was behind it, but it's just very, very distressing.
On transportation, yesterday Senator Boxx said that he had an agreement with the speaker on including money for transit in that final bonding and transportation bill. Curious, you know, in the final hours there negotiating the transportation deal, I mean, how involved was the administration in crafting that, or was that something that was crafted by the top two leaders in both chambers?
I think we were very involved up until the very end, at which point I don't know who was involved with what, about what. We were not aware of the final, and there's a disagreement between the speaker and the majority leader about what was agreed to or not agreed to or understood and not understood. I was not party to those last conversations. I don't have any way to assess whose version is correct, but the very last, say, two hours, I can't even say who was involved in the legislative process, but we were not directly involved in either the bonding or the transportation at that point.
Governor Dayton, Speaker Dowd told his members to stay in town for the next day or two in case there's a special session. Sounds to me like they're free to go home.
I communicated that to the speaker, that they should feel free to go home. There won't be a special session in the next 48 hours. I don't know when we'll meet to consider what the options are, but I think everybody needs, they knew they had a deadline, midnight last night. They didn't meet that deadline, and in the haste of the final moments there, democracy was not well-served. The public was cut out of discussion, and most of the legislators were cut out of discussion. Told a number of them didn't even have a chance to read the bills before they were asked to vote on them. I don't think rushing forward is the proper course of action.
Senator Boxx said that he would be open to a special session in the summer to the fall. How does that timeline sound?
Again, I'm not going to comment on, I haven't made any decision. Obviously, we have the summer and the fall, but I'm not going to make any decision about that till I've had a chance to talk with the leaders and consider the options.
Governor, are you happy with the $25 million for preschool?
Very much so. Very important to provide more pre-kindergarten opportunities for children, four-year-olds, and their parents. It's been enormously popular. Everywhere it's been instituted, we hear again and again, Lieutenant Governor's been even more active than I am, meeting with pre-kindergarten teachers and schools around the state. They talk about the enormous benefits to children of that early opportunity. The kindergarten and first-year teachers, first-grade teachers talk about how beneficial it is to school readiness for kindergartners. So there's just every reason to be expanding this opportunity. This is voluntary, but the school districts that want to take advantage of it will be able to proceed.
Representative Murphy was not very happy with that the licensed teachers are not required for pre-K. Do you have any problem with that?
I definitely think that it should have been licensed teachers. That's the way the school system works, but it is what it is.
Governor, the heart of a lot of the disagreements last night was the Southwest Light Rail and light rail transit in general. Speaker of the House said that that killed $700 million for transportation projects around the state and the bonding bill. Would you react to that, please?
Well, I think it's very unfortunate, the political games that are being played with the Southwest Light Rail project. The broader picture, which is the one I would expect legislators to take, since it represents the best interests of the entire state, is that a good metropolitan transit system is essential to a healthy metropolitan economy and therefore healthy to the Minnesota economy. And I've asked, met counsel previously about six months ago to say what are the options if we don't have a Southwest Light Rail line, and there aren't any. There's not a bus, a rapid bus transit route that goes from Eden Prairie to downtown Minneapolis, even if you use the shoulders on some of the existing highways. So what the denial of that project and denial of funding therefore for all of metropolitan transit is to force more and more people onto the highways, create more and more congestion, leave the 750,000 additional people who will be living in this area in the next 25 years with no alternative but to crowd onto the highways. And anybody who thinks that's a benefit to anywhere in the state of Minnesota is just not in touch with reality. So I'm very, very disappointed. I'm very disappointed that, again, the Southwest Light Rail line has been made for campaign slogan for those who oppose public transit for the metropolitan area, because it's one of these issues that's just too important for people to be playing narrow-minded political games with.
Governor, you've said several times that you insist on ongoing transportation funding. The bill last night would be one year. Can you live with a one-year transportation package if it comes down to that?
Probably not. I mean, I have to see, you know, what, I've said that consistently. I believe that anything short of that is a failure, and I don't think anybody should be able to pretend to their constituents or anybody else that this, even that kind of stopgap measure was anything other than a failure of the legislature to provide for the additional new revenues necessary to fund $600 million a year for 10 years. Now, having said that, you know, would I reject something acknowledging that failure to do something rather than nothing over the next year? I'm not going to rule that out, but I'm very, very disappointed that both the lack of long-term funding solution for transportation and the failure to provide for metropolitan transit, and I think those are both significant failures regardless of what happens hereafter for the rest of this year.
Governor, I know you're undecided on a special session, but can you imagine a scenario under which you go a whole year without there being a bonding bill or any new money for transit?
Well, it would be a serious setback for the economic vitality of the state, and that's what I'll have to weigh in the balance. I mean, the bonding bill is our projects all over the state of Minnesota. They're vitally needed, that put people to work building them, and to put that off for another year just delays our future economic growth. And so, you know, again, I have to weigh in balance, but I think it'd definitely be in Minnesota's better interest to have a good bonding bill approved in the near future, and that's what I will certainly, that's the position I'll take with the legislative leaders if they're willing to make. They couldn't agree among, between themselves last night on what should be in or not in the bonding bill. So we're starting at a point of impasse, and I don't know, you know, what the willingness is on anybody's part to go beyond that. They weren't willing to compromise up until through the final hours last night. I don't know what's going to change that equation, but hopefully they'll hear from Minnesota, so hopefully they'll hear when the spreadsheet and the bill for the bonding finally comes out and the $995 million of projects that are specified. And then I hope people in those communities affected by those projects will make it clear that that's unacceptable, and I hope the other $3 billion worth of projects that were left on the table will also express their extreme displeasure that this is not a bill that is sufficient to meet Minnesota's needs.
Governor, thank you. What is, what should voters' takeaway be, Minnesotans' takeaway on divided government in Minnesota, something you've been thinking about for the last couple of weeks?
Well, I don't think it, it didn't produce what Minnesota needs. Didn't produce the transportation bill that's going to be necessary to allow the state's economy to grow and our social environment to thrive over the next decade. And the lack of metropolitan transit is in the same way, just going to choke off the economic and social vitality of the metropolitan area. So I, we've said for two years now, this is vitally important, the future of Minnesota. Everybody agreed what was necessary, $600 million a year in new revenue each year for the next decade. The House leaders agreed to that, the Senate leaders agreed to that, I agreed to that, everybody agreed to it. So we knew what the marker was, what was necessary, and they fell short. In fact, after the Duluth Convention, they backtracked, the House Republicans, and said they wouldn't allow even a tab fee increase. So we're back to nothing but general fund money one time. That's a totally inadequate response. It's a failure.
At what point did you, watching the transportation negotiations, at what point did you recognize that a long-term deal wasn't going to happen?
Well, I mean, frankly, I didn't rule that out until, I don't know, about 11:30 last night. I mean, they were still, you know, discussing what their alternatives were, so I never, it didn't seem like it was coming together, but, you know, as Yogi Bear says, it ain't over till it's over, and the Minnesota legislature, even then, it isn't over. So, you know, you just have to wait and see how it plays out, but...
Governor, how about how it played out? Do you think the legislative process needs to be reformed through changes in rules or legislation so that things don't fail?
I think it's too early in the conclusion, I mean, I think the shortcomings of what happened, the process last night should be apparent to certainly to me and others. I don't think this is a time to kind of cast or try to come up with proposals for how it should be improved.
Governor, with two leaders now floating the idea of a special session, rather than you requesting one as you did twice last year, are you in a stronger negotiating position here when it comes to your priorities and what you would like to perhaps see in a special session if one happens?
Well, the Minnesota's priorities, there was, you know, and I'm not, you know, if we do have a special session, one of the real challenges will be everybody's got to jump in with what they want that they didn't get during the regular session. So I, you know, we're going to have to, and coming to any kind of agreement about how to limit the agenda for that special session, and I'm getting ahead of myself here, but if we were to do it, it's going to be a part of the challenge. So, but, you know, I'm going to focus on what Minnesota needs. It's not what I need, you know, it's what Minnesota needs. And when you shortchange the University of Minnesota, you shortchange the economic and social vitality of the future of Minnesota all over the state. I mean, let issues that they brought into this, the petty vindictiveness demonstrated to the university in terms of supplemental funding and in terms of the bonding is just really, was really uncalled for and really irresponsible. Someone really eliminating the sales tax exemption for the Minnesota High School League because of the position they took on transgender bathrooms, costing the league $800,000, and that money was going into a scholarship fund for low-income families and students to be able to participate in high school sports. So they're going to penalize all these kids out there who can't play sports because they're unhappy with a position, a very carefully considered position that the high school league took. The high school league is independent of me, it's independent of the legislature, as it should be. I make a couple of appointments, but basically they manage their own affairs. And for the legislature to say, "Well, we don't like a decision that you made thoughtfully, carefully, and so we're going to shaft kids," is just, again, beyond the bounds of responsible governance.
Governor, what about real ID?
Yeah, the police body cam bill didn't come out very balanced, came out in favor of police. Are you think, what are you thinking of doing with it? What do you say to people who really would like to see it not be that way?
Well, again, I have not made any decision. I did intervene in the final 48 hours and say that I would not support or sign a bill that had the, and I want to be clear about my position on this. It was not the issue that, it was not the issue that law enforcement could not review the video before they filed their reports, it was that they had the only right or ability to do so. The purpose of body cam, one of the principal ones, is to establish public confidence in these decisions that are made, that are made in the spur of the moment, but that, you know, need the body of public evidence to be available to the public. I believe anybody who has a, who's paid for by the citizens of Minnesota and is wearing a body cam provided by the citizens of Minnesota, that everything that they do is, everything I do is on the public record. And body cams mean that that public record should be available to everybody at the same time. And so, you know, my issue was not that I oppose law enforcement being able to review the video before they file their reports. That wasn't the issue for me. It was that they were given the exclusive ability, right, to do that, and meanwhile it could be withheld from everyone else. And you can debate that point back and forth, but the effect of it would be to destroy the public confidence in body cameras, which is the very purpose of the body cameras to begin with. So that was my concern about that particular measure. I appreciate that the legislature took it out. I know there are people who object to other parts of the bill, but there are also a lot of law enforcement throughout Minnesota who support it because they want some guidance. Otherwise, and, you know, this, absence of this legislation doesn't preclude any local government from making its own decisions on these matters. In fact, it would require them to do so because there wouldn't be any guidance in state statute. So there are a lot of, you know, benefits to local law enforcement about establishing these guidelines and procedures in the statute, but there are also some serious defects as well, and I haven't had a chance to assess or weigh at all in the balance.
Doesn't the State Data Privacy Act though apply currently ever since, you know, body cams have been out there? I mean, or local policemen be making their own rules?
Well, it's my understanding that with, in the absence of legislation, there's, I can't say, they can't violate existing data privacy statutes, but they, you know, basically don't have the framework for, in many key respects, you're going to have to make their own individual local decisions on the matters, including whether or not their officers can be able to review the video before they file their reports.
With real ID?
Didn't happen. Unfortunately, the federal government has postponed its point of sanctions into 2018, so there's a perfectly good chance next session for the legislature to reconsider this and try to find a conclusion, and I think, you know, no bill this year is better than a bad bill. So I think that's one that should be carried forward to next year.
With the presidential election coming up in less than a half a year, how does this all play out for the state of Minnesota?
You know, I say a year is a millennium in politics, so we're half a millennia away from the next election. I can foresee that. If I had that kind of crystal ball, you know, life would be so much easier.
Talking about elections, if you travel the 87 counties this year...
In 86 days.
In 86 days. Willoughby County.
I will be too.
Are you, are you going to be using that to beat up on, let's say, Republicans so you can get a better, what you would perceive as a better BFL legislature? And how does that play into your decision to call a special session? In other words, would it be better for you to beat up on Republicans for those 86 days and get a better deal next year?
Well, the first one is my responsibility, as is the legislature's responsibility, is to serve the people of Minnesota as best we can under the circumstances that the voters prescribed to us in November of 2014. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, as long as there's still the legislature, and I'm governor, we have a responsibility to put the best interests of the state of Minnesota ahead of politics. And that's what I will do in terms of a special session, in terms of, you know, making that decision, in terms of whatever else. I'm going around 87 counties in 86 days because I love doing it. In 2010, it put me back in touch with Minnesota in a way that I haven't been able to be over the last year or two, so I'm doing it, and I'm going to highlight issues that are outstanding and important, like water quality in areas where that's a relevant issue. But I'm not going, you know, and I'll separate very clearly, and I'm sure you all will be watching me, as you have a right to, separate out the travel that I'll do and the meetings I'll be having that'll be state business with political events that I'll fit in early morning or evening, and we'll clearly differentiate that in terms of expenses and the like. I expect to be driving most, if not all, of these ventures, so give me, put me back in touch firsthand with the quality of Minnesota's highway system, which, you know, the insights they get from traveling around the state like that, meeting with people, just seeing the real world out there are invaluable. And so I'm looking forward to it, but it's first and foremost my reconnecting with Minnesota in a direct way and highlighting the issues that I want to bring to the 2017 session, such as improved water quality. And, you know, again, I know everybody will be scrutinizing when I do it. I expect that, so it'll be straightforward.
Governor, on real ID, it sounds like one of the hangups was the undocumented immigrant issue and them getting driver's licenses and allowing that to happen eventually. Is that your understanding of what held this up?
Yes.
And where do you stand on that issue?
Well, I've said before, with some reluctance, and my position has evolved, but I believe the people in Minnesota who are residents here need to follow the law. So I don't count on those people who don't have licenses and are driving in Minnesota. I don't, that's unacceptable. I've heard from enough law enforcement to people who believe that the public safety would be better protected by enabling people who are driving without a license to be able to go through the testing procedures and have a license so that they are better qualified to be on the road. So, I mean, I weigh in the balance what I think is in the best public interest, and I've been persuaded over the last couple of years of my position changed, that the public safety is better protected by having, allowing people who are undocumented to obtain licenses, having gone through the necessary training and like as anyone else. That's my position on it. I realize this is stark, there's stark differences between, you know, people on mostly one side of the aisle and the other, but, you know, I'm, I think, you know, given that we're not going to incur any sanctions for the failure to pass a real ID bill this session, I think better off to carry it forward into next year.
Governor, would you be willing to keep standing up for that issue even if it threatens millions of other Minnesotans from getting compliant driver's licenses?
Well, people can get enhanced driver's licenses now. They have that option. And people who are, the only people this would, the absence of a real ID would affect, my understanding, are people who, for example, visit military bases or visit the Pentagon. These are, in most cases, professionals who understand they either have to get an enhanced ID or they have to get a birth certificate, both of which are options. For, you know, for most citizens who's interface with all of this is getting on an airplane, they're not going to be prevented from doing so up until 2018. So we have the 2017 session, the opportunity to revisit this issue, and at that point I will definitely feel a sense of urgency to get in compliance with the federal government.
Governor, if the bonding bill doesn't get resurrected, what do you think will be the, from your opinion, the biggest loss to the state from those projects that could have been passed but won't be funded?
Well, I can give you 995 reasons. Again, I haven't seen the spreadsheet, however many projects that aren't going to go forward. It's just a travesty. I mean, the water quality that I proposed for which there was bipartisan support, which is essential to helping the small communities who can't afford water treatment projects make their water safe for their citizens. Again, the bill was seriously deficient from what I've heard leading up to the final version in the House on higher education, Minskew and the university. But again, you know, you get a situation where something's better than nothing. You know, they put a lot of transportation projects in as a way of funding those. It's not an acceptable substitute for the lack of a transportation bill, but again, anything that moves something forward in Minnesota that puts people back to work, or puts, I should say, puts people to work, because we're pretty well building trades, but they're always looking for work. So whatever we're doing that makes investments that are going to better the state, those projects don't happen, it's everybody's loss.
Governor, looks like lawmakers did have some time to work on a bill for the soccer stadium. Your reaction to where they are with that?
Well, the tax bill provides for the property tax exemption. It does not provide for the tax elimination of the sales tax on construction materials, but they can apply for a refund under existing law. So it's a little bit of a time delay in terms of obtaining that, in the absence of upfront credit, but I would hope that they would, you know, see that they got most of what they were looking for and that the part that they didn't get is available to them through existing law.
Governor, you have 14 days to either sign or veto the budget and tax bill. Is that part of the special session considerations, or are those separate?
You know, I'm, again, I don't know when I'll get the bills, but I said earlier I'd, you know, intend to sign them within 48 hours. I don't think dragging this out for two weeks serves anybody's interest. I think the, whether the special session, whether or not there's going to be a bonding bill, what are the requirements to do that are matters that are standalone. I'm not going to hold the tax cuts for people or the supplemental budget, the areas that they did fund, I'm not going to hold those hostage to the other considerations. I think the... to the other considerations. I think the bonding and transportation should be considered and enacted on their own merits. But I gotta get the bills, I gotta get the spreadsheets first, and then I gotta get a couple hours' sleep, and then I gotta read them, and then I wanna talk with my staff. So we're gonna take our time in terms of making assessments, but I'm not dragging, I'm not dragging that review process out for other reasons.
Does that mean if there is a special session, would it likely happen within two weeks?
I would guess this, I can't say. I can't say. I don't feel that there's a, there's not, there's not a deadline like, you know, like last year at the end of the fiscal year. If we're gonna do it, it's gotta be done right. And it's gotta, you know, so I, but I don't, I don't feel imperative to do it in two weeks. And that's why I'm not gonna hold the bills hostage to getting a determination on a special session. That's a separate matter.
Governor, are the bonding and transportation bills linked? If there is a special session and these come up, do they both have to be acceptable to you, or will you consider each one on its own?
I consider each one separately, and they're intertwined because the legislators are intertwined them. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold one hostage to the other.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It is warm out.
I know, seriously.
Good afternoon. Is everybody ready? Well, good afternoon. Obviously, finished the legislative session last night. Kind of an interesting finish, but even with the things that happened at the end of the night, still, I think, a successful session. We passed some really significant tax relief that will give tax relief to Minnesotans in a very meaningful way. Things like exempting veterans retiree benefits from state tax, college tuition tax credits, taking care of some ag property tax relief for our farmers, things that really are gonna make a difference for Minnesota families, and we're really proud of that. The governor has indicated that he likes the provisions in the bill, and although he says he won't commit to signing it yet, we believe that that bill will get his signature. As far as the bonding bill, incredibly disappointed that that bill did not end up passing on the Senate side to become law. This was an incredibly good bill. In fact, I had Democrat members coming up to me on the floor last night saying this is the best bonding bill they've ever seen. It was incredibly heavy in infrastructure, particularly transportation infrastructure. It had probably more than seven hundred million dollars of money for road and bridge infrastructure across the state, and took care of really big projects that people have been talking about for a long time. Projects like Highway 12 in the west metro, which is one of the most dangerous stretches of highway in the state, Highway 14, Highway 23, Highway 10, really big projects that this would have really made a difference in maintaining and upgrading our road and bridge infrastructure. So incredibly disappointed that that bill didn't become law. Obviously, some disagreement going on about what was supposed to happen there. We had talked with Senator Bach earlier in the day. He did share with us the language that his members wanted added. We rejected that. He knows full well we rejected that. In fact, his staff and he asked us to help him find votes in the GOP Republican caucus, or in the Republican Senate caucus, to make up for the votes that he was going to lose by not having that Southwest Light Rail language in the bill. We did that. Senator Hahn was involved in that and committed to putting up those votes. We followed up a couple of times with Senator Hahn and Senator Bach's staff. So the understanding was crystal clear. And unfortunately, the Senate decided to add a controversial amendment that was outside of our agreement and send the bill back to us with literally minutes left before midnight. We were not able to receive that. We adjourned signee die, and unfortunately, because they broke that agreement and added that amendment, it put in jeopardy funding for cities all across the state, counties, townships, that really needed infrastructure investments in their road and bridge infrastructure. The bill was also very heavy in projects that were priorities of the governor. He had wastewater infrastructure, money for Minskew and the University of Minnesota. Just, it was really a great bill, and a majority of the minority caucuses in both houses voted to pass the bill. So that ought to tell you how much support this bill had in the legislature. This morning, I called the governor and asked him to call a special session. I asked him to call a meeting of the four leaders and the governor as soon as practical today to meet, to discuss the details. We have a couple of logistical problems. I have all of my members in town right now. I've asked them all to stay here until we can meet with the governor. And we're losing our chamber beginning on Wednesday. It's back under construction beginning Wednesday. So I indicated that to the governor. I asked him to call a special session either today or tomorrow to pass the bill as it was agreed upon last night. The governor has been very positive about the contents of that bill. This morning, I think he was on the radio praising the projects that were in it and the billion dollars of needed infrastructure investment around the state. So I know that not everyone's priority was in the bill, but Minnesotans' priorities were in this bill in a very broad sense. So with that, I can take some questions.
Speaker, the bonding bill, oh, hard to change. Has there been any compromise there on either side?
Well, you know, the interesting part is, what held up the bill at the end was something that was not in the bill, and was tried, you know, somebody tried to use this bill as a vehicle to advance an agenda on another issue. This bill really wasn't about Southwest Light Rail, and it broke the agreement that we had, and it was outside of the scope of the bill. And unfortunately, that controversial issue put at risk all of these other projects that are so not controversial. I mean, this bill was such a, I don't know that we can find a controversial thing in the bill. It really was a good bill, and I don't think we've seen the kind of transportation infusion of dollars that this would have put into our road and bridge system ever in the state of Minnesota. I mean, it likely would have been more than seven hundred million dollars of road and bridge money in one year. It would have been just an unbelievably huge infusion of dollars into our road and bridge infrastructure. So I literally had Democrats coming up to me on the floor of the House last night after our speeches, and even before that, saying, "Oh, my gosh, this was such a great bill. I can't believe the Senate did this." And, you know, I think we're all frustrated. I don't think any of us like the process that crams everything into the last few hours. You can probably tell by looking at me, I haven't slept a lot. I got four hours of sleep last night, which is about twice what I had gotten any of the three nights prior. So none of us like that process, and it does need to change. But, you know, some of this is what I would call textbook Tom Bach. It's wait you out to the very end until there's just enough time to get something accomplished, and then say that you're willing to do it. You know, Senator Bach and I have become good friends. I have a lot of respect for him. We get along very well, but that's, I mean, that's his tactic. And he's good at maneuvering in the legislature, but he uses time management to what he thinks is his advantage. Unfortunately, in this scenario, I think it hurt the process. And, you know, we had to put a bill on the floor which had brought bipartisan support. It had input from the minority caucuses in both the House and the Senate. We were given a list of projects by Alice Housman the night before. If a potential bill came together, what had to be in the bill? We put every single one of those projects in the bill. I think she, I don't wanna speak for her, I think she was thrilled with this bill. So it's unfortunate that, you know, some kind of clock management tactics, and that's what they were. And it is, it's textbook Tom Bach. Wait you out to the very end and leave just enough time to get something accomplished. Unfortunately, in this situation, he did it a second time by trying to send the bill back over with three or four minutes left in the session and force us to accept something we had already said no to. And that's just not right. It shouldn't, it shouldn't, this shouldn't be how it works.
Mr. Speaker, I wonder if that was a text message. He sent you a text message at eleven forty-four. He sent you the text message at eleven forty-four saying, "Are you gonna make that change to ten to twenty?" He said you did not respond, and that's what put you down.
He asked me at ten forty-four, I did have that text message on my phone. He asked me if that change had been in the bill. I did not get that text message until after we had adjourned signee die, so I didn't know anything about it. But he was very clear, and he had, he and his staff had said to us that when we rejected that language earlier in the evening, that he would need help passing the bill. We literally went and found the votes in the Republican Senate to help pass the bill. And then we followed up with Senator Bach's staff to let him know that we had those votes. Everyone knew, because of the letter that seven DFL senators had sent to Bach earlier, that they weren't gonna vote for a bonding bill unless it had Southwest Light Rail. Everybody knew we'd need seven more votes without that language. We delivered those, they asked us to deliver those votes, we delivered those votes. And Senator Hahn can talk about those conversations as well. So there is no disagreement about whether the language was in the bill. I think what might have caused the confusion was on the House floor, one of the Democrat members, I forget, who offered an amendment, Hornstein, offered an amendment that had to do with some rail language, non-controversial. It should have been in the bill. It was omitted accidentally. It was caught. We offered the amendment. I think that there's a possibility there was some key confusion on Bach's part, whether that amendment was that language. It was not. And, you know, the language was controversial. I can't pass the bill with that language in it. So, and he knew that.
If this all come down to your opposition to Southwest Light Rail, does that ultimately want to do?
You know, folks asked me last week, in just inside the building in a press conference, if I wanted to kill light rail. And, you know, my personal opinion is I don't like Southwest Light Rail. I don't think it's an effective and efficient use of our dollars. It's highly controversial, even in the communities where it will serve. It's highly controversial. But it's very highly controversial out beyond the metro area where folks are clamoring to get money for their road and bridge infrastructure. But what was ironic is folks were saying to me that I wanted to kill Southwest Light Rail, but what really happened last night was Southwest Light Rail killed seven hundred million dollars of road and bridge money for the entire state of Minnesota. And I think that's unfortunate. And a group of DFL senators in the Senate amended a bill on the fly and attempted to fire it back at us and force us to take that controversial amendment, and did it without any heads up to us that they were doing that. That doesn't serve the process well. It doesn't serve Minnesota well. And ultimately, it was a pretty high-price standoff because it cost Minnesotans seven hundred million dollars of road and bridge money.
Speaker, you accused Tom Bach of using time management to try to pressure you. What was waiting until eleven thirty to release this bonding bill without a public hearing?
I apologize about the background. I was asking the question again.
You accused Tom Bach of using time management to try to pressure you. What was waiting until eleven thirty to release this bonding bill without a public hearing? Is that time management pressure?
We didn't get to an agreement on the actual number in the bonding bill until about seven o'clock last night. By the time we got a spreadsheet, got everybody into a room to create the spreadsheet, decide what projects would be in and out of the bill, and get the reviser's office to draft the bill, we couldn't get it out any sooner than eleven thirty last night. So we were trying and scurrying as fast as we could to get that bill out. But that's, you know, that's textbook Tom Bach. I'm not accusing him of doing that. That's just Tom Bach. And you know what? He's really good at the legislative process. He knows how to use the legislative process to apply pressure to people that he's negotiating with. And, you know, even though in this situation, it didn't work out so well, I respect that he knows how to maneuver in that way. But it was wrong this time. And frankly, you know, we could have agreed, we had a meeting set with him at eight thirty. It was a slow roll all day long. We had a meeting set at eight thirty, or seven thirty in the morning. It didn't happen until about nine o'clock. And then, you know, Senator Bach and his staff went dark on us for about four or five hours during the middle of the day, when we were, we knew we had to set a target and get a bill put together if we were going to do one. So, you know, and I don't fault Tom for that. I really like Tom, and I very much respect Tom, and I hope, you know, this hasn't caused any divide between us. We actually work incredibly well together, and I think the bills, he, I know he's very proud of the tax bill and the supplemental budget bill, and I think I am too. You know, and we worked really well together. And those are true compromise bills. They're not everything I wanted. They're not everything they wanted. But it had things that both of us want and things that the governor wanted. So, you know, I'm optimistic that we can get this done. I'm very cautiously optimistic, however, because the agreement on this bonding bill, as popular it is as it is, and as much support as it has, I believe it's a fragile situation right now. And if we start from square one and try to rebuild a bill with projects that really haven't been considered, or try to readjust the size, I fear that this bill will fall apart, and we won't come to an agreement, and Minnesotans won't be well-served. They're the ones who will lose out. So that's why I've contacted the governor. He indicated that he does not, that we'll likely not meet today, from what I understand. He said something to the effect of there wasn't consensus on whether we should meet. I think we owe it to Minnesotans to meet and to talk about this as leaders. I have, since his press conference, text all of the leaders and ask them if they're willing to meet, and encourage them that we should meet. I think it's the right thing to do. I think Minnesotans expect us to pass this bill. I don't think they liked the political gamesmanship with Southwest Light Rail last night. It wasn't included in the bill. It should not have been added with five minutes left of the legislative session. And unfortunately, it should have been dealt with separately. If that was an issue, we should have dealt with it separately. It was controversial, and unfortunately, it cost us the entire bill. But I'm hoping we can kind of resurrect and recreate where we were at and pass that fairly quickly. My encouragement to the governor has been, let's do that today or tomorrow, while I still have members in town and while we still have access to the House chamber. If we wait too much longer, I'm afraid the fragile nature of this agreement will deteriorate, and it'll be very difficult to get to a final agreement. My expectation is that when folks read what was in this bill, and word gets out that the kind of dollars that were pending to be spent on our road and bridge infrastructure across the state, there's gonna be an incredible amount of pressure on the governor and on Senator Bach to pass this bill as it was agreed upon. And I expect that's gonna probably ratchet up immediately, because people are gonna be disappointed that these dollars aren't going out to improve our road and bridge infrastructure.
Speaker, the government, forty million dollars in tax breaks that tobacco companies come from to get into the tax bill, the governor says he has no idea where it's going.
That's a great political talking point for the governor, but what we did was we freeze, we froze the inflator on the tobacco tax, which is a horrible policy. This isn't a tax break for tobacco companies. This is the most regressive tax that you could put on Minnesotans. It affects the poorest Minnesotans the most. And it was bad policy to raise the tobacco tax a dollar sixty a pack, and it's worse policy to put an automatic inflator on it. We didn't reduce the tax or give a tax cut or a tax break to anyone. We simply removed the inflator that would automatically increase the tax over time. It's horrible policy, and it really is us giving away our legislative prerogative to increase or decrease taxes by putting them on an inflator. So that's all we did. We didn't cut the tax at all. We just simply removed the inflator so that next year it won't increase automatically. And it would have increased automatically, not on tobacco companies, but on the, you know, on Minnesotans who, you know, by percentage, the poorer Minnesotans are affected by this much greater. So, I mean, I know Governor Dayton loves to talk about taxing the wealthy, but his policies have been atrocious as far as taxing the poor. You know, it was, I don't know if they've still really backed away from the gas tax, but that's another example of a horribly regressive tax that really hurts lower-income people much more than higher-income people. So I think your policies have to represent your vision, and unfortunately, these policies have been opposite to what I think the governor's vision has been.
Speaker, Senator Bach told a couple of us a little bit ago that he would not agree to a special session unless there's what you call the solution to the light rail funding issue. Where do you, where does that leave?
Well, then, he shouldn't have agreed to pass this bill. He shouldn't have agreed to pass this bill without that language in it. And that's what happened. So, you know, Senator Bach, I don't think this was Senator Bach. I don't think that he put that amendment on and fired it back at us. I think he had seven members of his caucus that signed a letter a week ago that wanted light rail included, that saw an opportunity to put that amendment on and send it back to us and force us to take it. And unfortunately, their plan backfired. And that's gonna cost Minnesotans potentially seven hundred million dollars of road and bridge money. I mean, this was an unbelievably good bill. There was three hundred million dollars in cash in the bill that would have put money into transportation infrastructure. There was another two hundred and forty million approximately of local road and bridge projects in the general obligation portion of this bill, and I think there was about two hundred million or more of trunk highway bonds in this bill for transportation. So you're north of seven hundred million dollars of road and bridge money. And unfortunately, that's at risk now because seven members of the Senate wanted to play chicken with Southwest Light Rail with three minutes of the session left. They should have had these conversations about what was needed with Southwest Light Rail prior to three minutes being left in the end of session. It's tragic.
Would you like to, from local people, in the metro area, to side that issue?
You know, that has been discussed, and, you know, I think, and I applaud Chair Dibble and Chair Kelly for working so hard over the last year and more to come, to try to come to some agreement. Unfortunately, I don't think they quite got to where it was gonna be. Unfortunately, I don't think they quite got to where it was going to be, you know, able to make the caucuses happy. You know, we ended up with a situation in our caucus where the metro members were pitted against the outstate members, and it was such a divisive issue that we made a decision just not to proceed with that and to fall back to our Plan B, which... Tough for me to hear, too. We made a decision to fall back to our Plan B when it got so, you know, contentious, to put one-time money into our road and bridge infrastructure, and let's not fall any further behind, and that was our vision. Let's take a huge chunk of dollars, surplus dollars, put that into our road and bridge infrastructure, and not fall any further behind. So that's, that's what we did last night, or attempted to do last night. Obviously, that was thwarted by those seven senators in the Senate. If you have any questions about whether those seven senators were up to that, check their Twitter feeds, please. This is pretty obvious what happened last night, and, you know, it is really unfortunate. The legislative process should not work like that. We thought there was agreement that this bill was going to move, and I think there were people on both sides of the aisle really disappointed that these road dollars are now in jeopardy.
At what point did you decide that kind of the chicken package that you've been talking about for two years now was just no longer on?
About two or three days ago. And, you know, I think, and maybe this is also on the previous question, one of the problems with the way that we fund our transit in the state of Minnesota is, you know, CTIB and Met Council are controversial, and they're really separate. There are, you know, counties that aren't totally happy. The way CTIB operates with a couple of counties having the, with weighted voting, having the ability to dictate what happens with all of those dollars is controversial. And unfortunately, without addressing reforms on CTIB and Met Council, it's going to be almost impossible to pass a long-term transit funding plan. And I'll remind folks that transit is not controversial to us. The trains are controversial to us, and it's, it's because they're not as effective and efficient at moving people. We think that there's much better, smarter ways to spend our transportation dollars that really will help more people. It's such a small percentage of people that travel on our light rail transit as opposed to our road and bridge infrastructure. So if our road and bridge infrastructure were absolutely top-notch, no deficiency, then I think you'd talk about, okay, maybe we can do the extras. But we aren't doing the basics well enough right now to be talking about putting one or $200 million of new money into our transit systems. They already, I mean, CTIB is sitting on $200 million of surplus money. You know, there's, there isn't a shortage of money right now going into our transit systems. There's a, there's a problem that needs to be reformed in the language of who's responsible, who has oversight, and how it's paid for. And until that gets addressed, I don't think we can have a comprehensive transit plan.
What in your view happens if the governor does not call a special session in the next 48 hours?
I think the longer we wait, the more difficult it gets to get to an agreement on the bill that was on the floor last night. And I think that's incredibly unfortunate for Minnesotans. The bill that we were passing was a, was a really good bill, very infrastructure-heavy that would have really helped a lot of our road and bridge infrastructure across the state. I think the longer we wait, the more difficult it gets, and the more we try to throw in, the more demands people have, I think will make it almost impossible to pass another bill. And I am committed to working with them. If they are not willing or committed to doing it in the next couple of days, I will continue to work with them. But I think our best opportunity is to do it now, now while everybody's paying attention, now while it's fresh in their mind, and now while we're still all here. So again, I challenge the governor and the other leaders, let's get in a room, let's work this out. I think that's what people expect us to do. We passed that bill off the House floor last night, and we were excited. We thought that we were going to really put a historic improvement and infusion of new dollars into our road and bridge infrastructure, and we were excited. When we learned that amendment had gone on, we were in the back room watching this stuff happen on the Senate, watching them trying to reconsider the vote and try to remove the amendment. I think they knew what, I think they knew that the chicken didn't work, and they tried to undo it, but they themselves ran out of time, and it's just unfortunate. So, anything else? Very good. Thank you.